Hi, good evening everyone. Welcome to tonight's regular scheduled council meeting. A couple of items. Number one is a parking ban that will go into effect tonight at 9:00 PM. So, I'd really like to see that, particularly as the council, we're out of here for a reasonable time, hopefully at 8:30. We also have to get our vehicles, obviously, off the road. But to everyone out there, it appears that storm is gonna come, and we do have a parking ban at 9:00 PM. We want you all to be safe. With that, local?
Councilman Perry?
President.
Councilman Acosta?
President.
Councilman Figueroa?
President.
Councilman Conceiva?
President.
Councilman Lozé?
President.
Councilwoman Rivera?
President.
Councilman Solano?
President.
Your former speaker?
Thank you. All please rightfully, pleasantly.
United States of America and to the public for which it stands, the nation, the God, indivisible, and eternal.
Without objection, I'd like to move item 6I to the forefront. Right now, we have congratulations in order. With that matter clear?
Mr. President, we're here to celebrate the Rhode Island, the two wrestling teams association for both of Blackstone Valley Prep and Chicago Middle School. And Councilman Acosta, who wants to speak?
Sure.
You get the floor, Connor.
So, very proud and honored to be honoring the team, but also to be one of the coaches. This team is a collaboration that goes across grade levels, across schools, and across cities. Some of you may not be aware, at the high school level, we currently have a team comprised of athletes from Shea, Tolman, and Central Falls. So, it's really a true collaboration between two sister cities. At the middle school level, we have students from Ucap, from Calcutta, from Blackstone Valley Prep that all come together and wrestle together. So today, we're here to acknowledge some of their accomplishments. Please bear with me, I'll try to go through to make sure everybody gets recognized. They're still getting signed, guys, so when they call your name, please feel free to come to the front. We'll have a picture for everybody, and then, once they finish getting signed, then we'll make sure everybody gets their certificate. Alright, so starting here, with the Rhode Island Principals Committee on Athletics, or the Ripcoe Middle School State Wrestling Tournament, is the most competitive level for middle school wrestlers, 6th to 8th grade. First, we want to recognize 6th grader Mr. Spencer Fine, who placed 7th place at the 106-pound weight class. We also have Mr. Gabriel Acosta, who came in 3rd place at the 180-pound weight class. As a part of the Rhode Island Wrestling Association, a Ryowa Kids State Championship, that we want to recognize Danny Hernandez, who came in 3rd place at the 52-pound weight class. Ryan Rosario, who was 3rd place in the 92nd-pound weight class. Benjamin King, at the 60- to 63-pound weight class. Magalias Armstrong, who came in 3rd place at the 108-pound weight class. Zarius Armstrong, who came in 2nd place at the 135-pound weight class. Gabriel Acosta, who came in 2nd place at the 187-pound weight class. Two special guys, these are some of our youngest guys, who are in their first year, the twins, and they dominate. So, Justin Sanchez, who came in 2nd place at the 75-pound weight class. And his brother Anthony Sanchez, who came in 2nd place at the 80-pound weight class. Finally, here we have Mr. Spencer Fine, who was the tournament winner, 1st place for the 108-pound weight class. At the high school level, at the Rhode Island State Freshman Junior varsity tournament, we have Justin Montero, who came in 4th at the 182-pound weight class. And Henry Ayamontas, came in 4th at the 285-pound weight class. And then, at the Rhode Island Interscholastic League High School Championship, Jacob Felix came in 5th place at the 106-pound weight class. Finally, and this is one of our largest accomplishments, this is the second year that PCWC and Beat the Streets comes in 1st place at the New England Women's Championship as a team. We want to recognize Makia Share, who came in 5th place at 97 pounds. Cici Claude, who came in 4th place at 105 pounds. Mariana Xavier, who came in 3rd place at 150 pounds. Amber Agaral, who came in 3rd place at 105 pounds. And Lucy Norris, who came in 1st place at 97 pounds. Also, I want to take a second to recognize the coaches, if they would come to the front. And we have Coach Lakeisha Sullivan, Coach Oscar Lewis, and Chris Tapper, who are great student friends. Yes, if you guys want to get together, you got the picture Eugene, or you can get us?
Alright, that's good.
All coach. All coach, all coach.
Good job, good job guys.
Next item is for the Congress present. We have several people signed up. Tobacco glasses.
Who want to go first?
You.
You. Introduce yourself first.
My name is Sean Gani. Most people don't come in town. Come in town.
What grade are you in?
I just recently moved to Central Falls. I'm in 11th grade, 11th grade.
Name, age, grade, grade you're in?
I'm Karen Furlough. I'm 17, and I go to Central Falls High School, and I live in Central Falls, Rhode Island.
What grade?
I'm Melissa. I'm in the 11th grade. I live in Central Falls, and I go to Davies High School.
Hello, good night. Hello, my name is Halston, and I'm your brother. I am 17, and what's that? I live in Central Street.
Hi, my name is Glorita. I'm 16 years old. I stay in Central Falls High School, and I live on 213th Hill Street.
Hi, my name is Selma. I'm 14 years old. I go to Calcutta, and I live in the place we.
Hi, my name is Kaleka. I am from Central Falls High School, and I'm 17 years old. And I live in 30th Street, in Central Falls.
Hi, my name is Robby. I'm 17 years old. I'm 10th grade, and I live in Barbers Street.
Hi, my name is Marlene. I'm 15, and I'm sophomore at Central Falls High School.
And on this premiere, I get the pleasure of working with these lovely youth. We're gonna turn it back to John and John and Halston. Let's tell you why we're here.
Well, it's obvious. We're actually here to talk about tobacco, you know? I was like, it's not, these are not good. I mean, tobacco is not like, a healthy, a healthy situation for any human, and it should not be consumed. It's, and, like, these are flavored, kind of tobacco things, and... Oh yeah, it's called Juul. And Juul, Juul is like, is an electronic device, and it's basically gonna be charged. And it's not, it's not good for, for any kind of use, because, you know, it's some of, it's a tobacco product, so, I don't know. You can't, yeah, this goes, this also goes with it, and it's to be used, and, I mean, it's like, to be put in the device, so that you can be able to smoke it. And pass it around. You can't open it and see what's in there. Also, these are, these are all flavored tobacco products, too, like, this is Backwoods. Yeah, Backwoods and Sweet Aromatic cigars. We purchased it, we purchased it today, and, at a local store on Dexter Street. And this is Sweet Cigarellos, guaranteed fresh, three fresh cigars in the bag. Yeah, same here. It's Treble. And this is, this is Garcia y Vega, green leaf cigars. And on the back, it says Aged Aromatic Tobacco Combined with our Condello, Condella wrappers. Make it, make a winning pair, slow, smooth, and sweet for a softest sophisticated smoking experience. This, also, see, this is also a Treble product, from, yeah, it's tobacco, too. And it says, it's pure gold cigarellos, and guaranteed fresh. Shouldn't be fresh, you know, so, yeah, pass it around. Yeah, this, this is also, it says basically natural, and it's crafted to burn slow. And Palmer Natural Connecticut Leaf Rapper. It, it's not even flavored. And that's what should be sold. It shouldn't be sold at all. Out.
So, I'm very head caught, um, my students are very shy, but we wanted you to know that we have gone out, we've been going to the stores again, educating the stores, surveying the stores. We understand that the products that the vendors are purchasing are not marked flavored, but that is no excuse. The blue that Mr. Lazea has, that's natural. You know it's natural. Anything else that has color, or anything, any fruity color, anything that's not natural should not be sold in our stores. So, we're continuing to do the tobacco education. We've gone out, we were out Saturday, we were out last week, we were out February vacation. The youth continue to go out, but these are some of the products that are continuing to be sold. FYI, Pawtucket is working on banning. Cumberland, Lincoln, North Smithfield, WomSawkit has done it already. We, so, this legislation is coming, as you know, prevention has been regionalized, and one of the tasks for the other, the other six regions, or five regions of the Southern, is to become flavor-free. So, as some might think that, oh, they'll go with Pawtucket, Pawtucket is working on it, too. They're in negotiations as well. Not sure if anyone has reached out to Matt yet, but Matt is very popular, our city solicitor around the flavors. Very popular, and his ears should be ringing. I'd like to bring some notice to Councilman Acosta. At the last council meeting, I had to leave, I had a little guest that couldn't hang out, but I want to thank you for supporting the fines. I know that originally you did not vote on it, but I appreciate you holding the vendors accountable. To my two dear councilpeople that supported this, I just ask you to please think about what the message is. We're holding our youth accountable for actions and behaviors. If the youth see that vendors don't have to comply with local and city policy, that doesn't send a strong message for what we're doing. All of this is to help all of these youth, and the other youth, and youth over there, to be able to sit there one day. So, thank you for this opportunity. The Juul is a new device, it's a new vaping device, they're fighting it in the schools. I haven't heard of anything at CF High, Cumberland High School, Lincoln, Pawtucket. Kids are bringing that in school, and it is. The youth are so crafty, that they learn how to put marijuana in a little device, and they, so, it's been confiscated, so, this was bought at Capital Farms, the Charger, and you can go on YouTube, and you get a whole explanation on how to use it, yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have a quick question before you leave. Do you have, or, no tawgie signs for the box yet?
We are in the middle of working on that. We got a quote, and we're working on that. So, hopefully, within the next month or two, we should have the signs up. We're really trying to get them before we kick off the Sprint programs after the cops.
Alrighty, so, thank you very much for all you do, and kids, thank you for all you do. Thank you.
They want, I'm sorry, I had to add one thing I forgot. Thank you, John. As shy as he is, he remembered. We are working with Providence to compile a booklet, but not a big booklet, but a booklet that's trying to move Portuguese, Spanish, and English on what products can be sold, and what products cannot be sold. So...
Then we, earlier today, we went to check on the stores, who still sells products or not, I mean, tobacco products. We went to one of the stores, then, we was like, so glad that he didn't have it, but he said he had license to it, but he didn't have it. And having a license and not you selling tobacco products shows that, like, he's more responsible, and thinks about other people, other people's health, and, and maybe the youth, too. Oh yeah, it, hey, oh yeah, Antico, I think it was Antico Bakery, on Dexter Street.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thanks again, Brilla. Appreciate it. Concerned with the snow, so be safe, and we're trying to get everybody out of there already today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniela Magana, Caesar Azua, and Charlotte Gagin. They'll all speak to that.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the Central Falls City Council. My name is Daniela Magana, and I am a Central Falls resident and a junior at Blackstone Valley Prep High School. I wanted to take this opportunity to share my sadness and fears about the Parkland school shooting that I'm sure everyone here is aware about. I'm sad because young people my age went to school that morning not knowing that they would be shot and killed. I'm scared because since I can remember, I've been watching school shootings take place across the country, and it seems as though the country refused to take action against laws, against guns. As a 6th grader, it was hard to understand what had happened in Sandy Hook. However, now as a high school student, I've been very inspired to take action, and no longer risk my life waiting for someone else to take action for me. I want leaders to talk about this openly with young people. I've also been very inspired as I've watched the student survivors of the Parkland shooting take a strong stance on gun reform. They are planning national walkouts and marches, and as a high school student, I feel it is my responsibility to also do something here at home, to stand in solidarity with the Parkland students, and to advocate for change on gun laws in our state. There are a number of bills that have been introduced that would limit access to assault weapons, ban rapid-fire devices like bump stock, and ban firearms in schools. Additionally, there are, there are bills that would create a process for allowing the removal of firearms from someone who shows red flags. As a student who is now old enough to understand and produce change, I plan to organize with my fellow classmates, who, two of them are here today, to understand and produce change. I know that the city councils can pass resolutions supporting bills, and I hope that this council will support passing resolutions and supportive House bills. 7591, 7766, 7075, and 7688. And I have here just like, short little summaries of the bills, if you have them out. So, as your constituent, I ask you to please consider supporting these bills. As a sign of you taking this seriously as well, we would like to extend an invitation for you all to meet with a group of scholars from the Blackstone Valley Prep High School at your earliest convenience. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, any for everyone? Oh, I don't know why I'm so nervous. Alright, so, my name is Caesar Azua, and I am a resident of Central Falls, and I am a junior at Blackstone Valley Prep High School. So, as my friend Daniela mentioned, every student at our school and the schools across the country are sad and are fearful of the lack of action taken on gun reforms. We've been watching shootings happen year after year with absolutely no change for gun laws. Students wake up every morning, planning to go to school to learn something new, but yet, in such sadness tragedies happen, such as we see in Sandy Hook. And it amazes me that if I were 18 years old, I could walk into a gun store and buy an AR-15 without questions. These weapons don't belong in the hands of civilians, they are weapons of war. As president of the Scholar Council of Blackstone Valley Prep, I've been working with other scholars, such as Charlotte and Daniela, to organize a walkout on March 14th. We plan to do this on honor of the 17 lives that were lost in Parkland, but also bring awareness to our need of common sense and gun reform. We're here to ask for your help. As a constituent, I ask you to please encourage legislators in the General Assembly to pass House bills 7591, 7766, 7075, and 7688. These bills address keeping guns out of schools, banning bump stocks, and moving firearms from individuals who pose a threat to others, and banning assault weapons. Young people like us aren't going to continue remaining in the sidelines. Enough is enough. We hope that you use your position and power to evaluate our concerns. As Daniela mentioned, we invite you to our school on Wednesday, and we hope for you to receive questions and express what you're doing for our community, with a bunch of our scholars, and we hope to see you there, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Charlotte Gagin, and I'm a junior at BUC, and I'm working with Daniela and Caesar and other scholars to plan ways in which students can make their voices heard about school shootings. We believe that our local elected officials can help amplify our voices. We want guns out of our schools, and we want to ensure that our laws make it harder for civilians to own weapons of war, such as AR-15s, the type of guns that killed 17 people in Parkland. We hope we can count on your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I got a couple of questions for you. I understand the National Walk has been canceled for this Wednesday, is that correct?
Yeah, because of the weather.
Is it still on for Jinx meeting, at Jinx conference?
So, we decided to cancel the walkout, and instead, we are going to have our homeroom, which is what we have in the mornings, where we all have our individual work, and we're gonna set it until 10:00, and that's when our scholars, who are trying to form this type of awareness, we are going to exit our classroom and write petitions for the scholarship sign, and we are going to exit our classrooms, either depending on the weather conditions outside or inside cafeteria, and we're gonna take a picture in order to bring awareness. And we are also going to, on March 24th, at the Protestant State House, we are trying to get justice in order to provide for BUC families and other scholars to attend this march and make a true influence of what BUC is trying to do.
So, is the walk still on?
No, we're just going, not for our school.
Okay, thank you. And also, do you know what stage these bills are in? Are they in committee? Have they come out of committee, or you're not sure? Well, thank you so much for your time, you're very welcome.
First off, I also want to thank Caesar, this is my words, he's one of my constituents, I appreciate it. And I want to tell the solicitor in front of you guys, that you can count on my support, so I'll be submitting a resolution for the next council meeting in April, supporting these school bills, so we'll get to work on that, I appreciate it.
I will second that. Mr. Chairman. Ask you for your time. Really appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman. I think what you said is very moving, and what took place in Florida was such a disturbing occurrence that affected everyone around the country. And I'm very happy to see that your school and you as individuals are getting involved. I, on March 1st, requested, and I'm not sure if any actions have been taken place in your school building, but I requested that the Central Falls Police Chief report to the City Council to do a risk assessment of all city buildings and other city property. I requested that a week and a half ago. I hope it's ongoing, and I hope for the police chief, and if he brings in the state police or any other authorities to assist, that we get a risk assessment, not just on school buildings, but also on charter schools and other city property. I also request, because of the importance of this situation, I put a request in that the superintendent and the school advisory committee come to the City Council to report the status and answer questions on this item and other... and other financial and status, the questions that we have that are ongoing capital improvement, but issues such as this.
Yes, please stick to the school issue.
I am talking about the school issues. Now, has your school itself taken any further action for security wise? Because of what's going on, if you could explain?
Um, so as a lot of classrooms, I'm not sure if the Central Falls, uh, schools have it as well, but there's panels right next to the doors when you go into classrooms. Um, in our school, that's also the case, we have like the window panels where you can see straight through. Um, so something that we've started to do is incorporate little curtains to cover up so if anyone were to come in, you won't be able to see through. Um, I think it's a very not expensive cost that people can do around like this country to prevent people from looking in directly into classrooms. Um, and it prevents like big tragedies like we've seen.
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, we, we have many people still there. Uh, Councilman Acosta will be submitting a resolution supporting your bills and I, I again, and I'm sure that I counsel, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Head of board. So, but don't criticize the students for a speech.
No one is criticizing.
And I thought it...
Is this part of the pu- public meeting now? I have comments.
This is always comments.
Um, oh, okay, alright. Just a couple of things. One, finances. Um, I would like to request that when the budget is ready, that there be a public hearing or two so that the public can comment and that it be limited to more than just five minutes like it was last year. It was very limited as to what the public could say. And that when the budget goes out, that the public has enough time to analyze what's being put down and that they have a chance to address it here at the council meeting and not be limited to five minutes. I don't think that's right for a budget of the size that we have with taxpayers interested in what's going on. So that's one of mine. Um, the other thing is, I would again request, and I've done that in the past, is that there should be, um, financial reports at every one of the council meetings. And I know there's been some problems in the, uh, finance office with our individuals out. That is no excuse, absolutely no excuse. There's no company I know and no organization I know that would get, let an excuse like we don't have enough employees, that we can't get a finance report out. That is one of the most important things that you should be looking at to check what we're spending our money on. And we don't seem to be doing that in the city of Central Falls, so I'm, you know, I'm requesting that. Um, you have a resolution, uh, for transfer of Rinaldi Housing Funds to balance the 29th city budget, the state budget. I am not in favor of taking money from one organization and balancing the budget in the state of Rinaldi. We have been doing that forever. When I was the director of the Department of Labor, the state took $5 million from the workers' comp fund, which they were supposed to pay back, which was business money for workers' comp, never went back. We do this every single year, taking money, transferring. State or Rinaldi should have a budget they can live with, put together and live with. Uh, one of the things I read in the paper, that there's gonna be a 5.5% increase for employees of the state and I think that's wonderful, 'cause I was a state worker at one time. But it has not been put in the budget when they put budget together. And if they were negotiating to do anything about increasing wages, they should have had a sum or a percentage they put in the budget so that the wages could have been accounted for. Poor planning on the part of the state. You should never, never put a budget together without knowing what you, your finances are gonna be, your income and your expenses. And we do that all the time in the stateside and that's poor. Um, community center, I keep hearing about the community center and that we need a new community center. I think, you know, we really seriously need to talk to some of the people who were involved when we did have a community center. We have two organizations. We have the Y, the Petucket Y, we have the Boys Club within a mile of where we sit. I'm on the Y board and I'll be very honest, um, the Y has funds available for individuals who cannot afford to pay either the full fee or the whole fee. People should look into what is available before we go and build a building we are not gonna be able to support. Our last fiasco with community center, we've had it three or four times where it, it went down, we didn't pay our taxes, uh, we couldn't afford it. Uh, we, it went over to the Central Petucket Y, uh, one of the mayors didn't want to extend it, that's why we have no center there now. We would have had, I'll tell you right now, if the Petucket Y had continued with that, the community center, there would have been a new community center. Like you see up there with a call, maybe not that big, but there would have been a new one. So, one, you need to look at what the cost is and the operation of the cost and what individuals in the city can pay for. And we should look to other organizations, what is out there for our people? And how can we get that for people in Central Falls? There's plenty available. The other one is I, I just would like to say, I keep thinking about the Corning Glass Works. That's a big piece of property we, we've looked at, there's a planning proposal. I didn't see anything in there about the Corning Glass Works. You know, the question is, what are we doing about that piece of property? That's a huge piece, it takes up almost two blocks. And I don't hear anything going on with that piece of property. Uh, the other would be, it's those individuals who are listed on the, um, planning that's in this, I guess in the minutes, the package here, you know, now it came. Are they all aware of the fact that their pieces of property are, are being talked about? And if they're not, they should be made aware of that. I agree, there's a lot of property that we could, you know, reutilize. And I would like to see some of that utilized for, for economic development. And I don't mean building more houses, I mean building facilities and plants that are really gonna bring in money, uh, for the citizens of the city of Central Falls and bring true jobs, not make illegal jobs, but true jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paul.
Edison, present for the comments.
Okay, also, uh, without objection, I'd like to move item seven, the hearing. Uh, tobacco, we have the offices here tonight, Detective, uh, so item seven, I'd like to move it up now. A couple, hi, other parties here?
The Attorney, President. So, item seven is continuing business and has both the hearing and the, the license. So, both tables are plus meeting. So I'll start with, um, this is the city council sitting as the Board of License Commissioners and its hearing consideration and possible action regarding the filing license and license holders. Uh, here I'm, so Woody and it's, uh, VBA CF Mini Market. Uh, Mrs. Shaffaro, who's attorney for the licensing issue.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ed Shaffaro, we have the CF Market. Based on the facts, the evidence in the law, there will be an admission by my client as the business.
Thank you for, uh, once again being here tonight and looking for motion.
Thank you for being present, sir. Um, I'd like to make a motion to fine the, uh, the business $250 for the first offense.
You have a motion by Council?
Saying that we...
That's the first offense, that's correct. We have a motion by Councilwoman Seagut, second by, uh, Councilman Figaro. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, uh, for a first offense on an issue that there was much deal of, let's say, discussion but confusion on the actual, if the tobacco that was sold was actually ones that were, uh, considered a flavored tobacco. Uh, I think we discussed it at the last meeting. Um, I think not just in this case, but in other cases, it was shown that there was confusion on that. Um, I understand that this store has not had any violations in the past. Uh, I personally believe that $250 is too steep of a fine. Uh, I accept that we should take some action, but I think, uh, I contacted the Solicitor's Office about amending the ordinance, but I believe 250 is too much. I would move that we amend the ordinance or amend the, the, uh, request for a motion to fine to, and reduce it to a $100 fine.
Any further comment? Again, uh, we went over this before, Mr. Lizard, currently on the book. First offense is $250. That's the law, that's the ordinance. If down the road you wanna attempt to amend that ordinance, change the amount, so be it. But at this point in front of us, the proprietor has basically admitted, uh, violation and it's before us. Uh, anyone else?
Did you contact a retailer about this, about them selling these to you? Because it's not visible on the package, right? It doesn't say it's clear on the front of the package, so did you, right?
The thing that is interesting about this is the, uh, what's interesting about this for a second, if I may be heard, I don't want to take too much time, is it was a pre-existing condition. The Rinaldi Department of Health came to my client's store previously in December. He knew the people. They inventoried the store, they looked at everything, they walked out, then he noticed and he referred him. Hereafter, hereafter, he had a similar operation, which my client is guilty of. But by the same token, it was a misunderstanding on his part. There's a Rinaldi Department of Health came to his store in December and inventoried the goods in the store.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else?
Yes, I would like to ask, ah, ah. At the time, uh, that when the manager went to your store and inventoried everything, so they didn't say anything good or bad, they didn't send you any letter or say what was wrong, what wasn't?
State law and Rinaldi's different. State law doesn't ban flavored tobacco we use, so...
Okay.
That could be the misunderstanding also. When I wanted to help, give me a certificate, you know, saying it's okay and then you have the city saying it's not.
That's a good point and, and what I would say is that Rinaldi State Law on the issue of tobacco license then sets a floor as to what the merchant shall do and then we've raised the floor in terms of what's allowed. So, State Law does not, State Law says you can buy cigarettes at 18, we changed it to 21. State Law says you can sell flavored tobacco, we banned it. Um, uh, and there's a whole other host of changes that we made. So, uh, I believe the clerk was sending out correspondence.
Yes.
To further clarify this or we're in the process of doing that?
We have sent several correspondence over the course of the instance. The ordinance was revised that explained to all licensees the changes when the ordinance starts being revised both times and then when it was introduced, where it was so enacted.
Thank you. Go call, go.
Mr. Chairman, I have an amendment on the floor. You have a rule on...
There was no second.
Then that's the ruling, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Councilman Acosta.
Yes.
Councilman Figaro.
Yes.
Councilman Fonseca.
Yes.
Councilman Z.
No.
Councilman Rivera.
Yes.
Councilman Solano.
Yes.
Permission carries, please.
Thank you again for your time, appreciate it, thank you, best of luck.
And then the next hearing is, um, with Mr. Jose Sanchez, VBA New Kiara Supermarket. And this was off the table at last meeting.
Hello, my name's Malcolm. I'm a employee at the store. So they couldn't make it tonight.
Malcolm, would you mind if Detective McGilte spoke first as to what the charges are before the council?
Yes.
She's standing next to you.
Good evening, it's gonna be the, um, same issue we're having on January 30th. Myself and Detective Bullman had a undercover youth going, attempted to buy the flavored tobacco. The youth did enter the address of 693 Dexter Street. Um, he attempted to purchase the blue. Um, he was asked for no ID and he was served.
Malcolm, would you raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so have you got it?
Yes.
How do you respond to these charges on behalf of your employer? Do you have permission to speak on his or her behalf tonight?
Yes. It's the first violation, eh?
Yes.
It's running, uh, before the store was under another management, now it's under new management. So, think you could get another, another chance?
It's still, still your first offense.
Yeah.
We're treating it as a first offense.
Okay, I understand. So, isn't he a fine or...
Yes. It's $250 for the first offense.
Okay. I understand.
I move to fine the business $250 for the first offense.
A motion by Councilwoman Fonseca to fine, uh, $250.
Thank you.
We have second by Councilwoman Vavish. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I review my, um, comments from previous. My personal feeling is a $250 fine for a first offense on an issue that is under question.
They asked for ID.
They asked for ID, but was it sold?
They did.
Flavored, no, the flavor. It was under 18? Was it under 21?
It was under 18 and they did not even ask for ID.
Okay, I withdraw my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? There's a motion on the floor, clerk please call the vote.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Councilman Acosta.
Yes.
Councilman Figaro.
Yes.
Councilman Fonseca.
Yes.
Councilman Z.
Yes.
Councilman Rivera.
Yes.
Councilman Solano.
Yes.
Permission carries, please.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much.
Item two is consideration petition of license, tobacco license for people at last meeting on February 12th. And so I think for LR 21.
Uh, first question I have, I don't have one available for...
Please do.
Thank you.
My name is... You just got the...
Still mic?
Yeah. I've, uh, you licensed it, right? But almost it's dead month, but I have all the, said, cylinder, uh, under 21. Of 21, apologies, no, no flavor in any of it, so.
You did your homework, that's good. Any questions in the opposite? Senator motion? Motion by Councilwoman Rivera, second by Councilwoman Figaro, under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none. All votes in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Tableau aside, please. Hearing none, seeing none, aye, aye.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for doing your homework. Without objection, I'd like to move the approval of bracket and move on to the executive communication.
Take your communication, our additional report.
Mr. Chairman.
So we see...
I have questions, Mr. Chairman.
Report just so we see.
I have questions to report, I have requested at the last meeting, Mr. Chairman. I have questions, the city clerk is here. I have questions over the other departments, Mr. J... Mr. Chairman, and I've requested from the last meeting, in the last financial meeting, that we have a detailed report and that it be prepared to come and answer questions on finances. Now, Mr. Chairman, this is the city council, and we hear reports and have the opportunity to question departments. We are not being allowed the opportunity to question our finances. I called up the Finance Director's Office today, requested further documentation, they were unable to provide it. She told me that, she is here, the finance, active Finance Director.
Hi. How can I help you?
When I spoke to you earlier today, did you, were you able to accumulate some of the documents that I requested?
You, you sent, you called me and I sent email about your request, and I currently you, you have to understand, you required us some comparison documentation, some analytical stuff that we can complete for you. We have like a five items that, and you called me today around 12:00.
Did I, did I come see you over two weeks ago also?
Yes, I understand, but at this point, you said you want something additional and whatever list you want us to present for you, we have to discuss it. I don't know how to, totally you requested, and I don't know how to let it go.
Can you, are you able to provide the documents that I requested?
I don't have, I don't have these documents. I have to make them, so I need some time.
Here are reports that you had of financial documents. They are records within the system. I'm not asking you to create anything.
This system doesn't provide comparison documentation. The system provides you by fiscal year separately, and I have to do it.
But I've also requested a fiscal year 17 and fiscal year 18.
I wasn't able to provide a three.
Okay. But we know, one of the most important functions and duties for me as a city council member is financial security and fiscal responsibility. And over the last year, if I cannot receive fiscal documentation, then I cannot verify fiscal stability or attest to it. I refuse to attest to documents that I have not seen or I have not witnessed. That is not proper. Mr. Chairman.
I just assume that it's not only due to a parliament on this.
She's not on the stand here tonight, Mr. Luzier. And the anticipation period is long gone. We are now out of the bankruptcy. We no longer have to sign.
So we should file financial reports, Mr. Chairman.
She gave you an answer, you called it today, and the meeting is tonight. Let it be, Mr. Luzier. She's not going to be on the stand. She does not deserve it.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Josh.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I was just, Council President, I was just wondering if there are any specific questions related to her report.
Yes.
And the director's other reports.
So, yeah, I don't know.
Yes. I have a point of order, Mr. Chairman. We received this agenda. You're acting on it to quickly push it through as we see. We're acting on a financial department, a November 17 revenue and an October 17 expense. That's not what we received, Mr. Chairman. That's not what was distributed to me. I have here a January 34 expenditure, not what was advertised here for receipt, a November 17.
I guess that whatever you receive, you have to review. And I, even if it's a mistake or not, I assume because I did some work and everyone, I guess.
I'm not blaming you or anything. I'm saying what was stated in the agenda is not what we received. Two different documents.
So would you, if you would like to table that, then that would make sense. Because what you received are more current documents than what were listed on the agenda. Those item that seem to, that have seemed to not been updated, and so if you would like to table that, it would probably be the appropriate action.
Yes, I think we should table all of them.
And I would also.
I think there's a motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Councilman Luzier at the request of Josh to table the financial reports of the departments. Is there a second?
Second.
Has a second by Councilwoman Rivera. Any further discussion?
My parents are divorced, and so I understand disagreements, but the way these meetings have been going is getting obnoxious from both sides.
I agree.
All right? So if you have questions, you can't send them the day of and expect someone to show up with the reports, my man. That's unrealistic. If you had brought me an email, hey, hey, I let you rant for like 15 minutes, buddy. You don't listen to that, right? And so if you had sent an email last week, when you got the report and you brought that to me, and you said, hey, these were the questions I had, I want them answered, I would have you back 100%. But instead, when you stand up here and make a freaking show out of it, it wastes my time and their time. I have nothing to gain from. You could have noticed that that was the January report compared to the detailed October thing a week ago, and we could have had that instead of spending five minutes lecturing a grown woman about it. That's a waste of time. And so if you have the questions, write them down, send them an email, make a point so we all know, and she can cover them one by one when she's here. But I'm not going to watch you berate another grown adult much longer, man. This is a waste of time. Thank you.
Councilman.
Okay, we have, all those in favor, see if I, I say.
I appeared two weeks ago on this question, and I've contacted twice since to get further clarification.
Mr. Luzier, you voting for it?
To defer, yes. I think the motion.
Will you give your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Solana, did you vote? Motion, Mr. President?
Thank you.
Do you do your vote?
We table.
Mr. Chairman, not to delay, the city assessor has abatements on. I ask that we act on those so we don't have to keep him here any longer since he worked if he's here.
He's not here. Len Morgana will speak on the abatements. That's the big challenge. I wanted to acknowledge the mayor's youth council from Calcutta. They're here today, but apparently they, are they in the hallway?
They just left.
Daisy, come on.
Mayor's youth council, come on in.
They just went down. Oh. Daisy's representing for the mayor's.
Thank you for being patient.
You guys had to wait a long time, huh?
Ladies and gentlemen, the mayor's youth council. Anyone want to speak? You got a half hour to speak.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. We're the mayor's council from Calcutta Middle School. My name is Delray. I'm in eighth grade and fourth grade.
Would you introduce yourself?
My name is Josh.
My name is Mason, and I'm from Calcutta Middle School, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Marley, and I go to Calcutta Middle School, and I'm in fifth grade.
I have the pleasure of working with these lovely students. It's awesome working with them and hearing their bright ideas about how to improve the community, so it's a pleasure working with them. We're happy to be here today.
Thank you for all you do. I have a quick, I have a quick question to ask you. Right now, is a possibility of snow. Are you rooting for the snow or against the snow, so you'll have school tomorrow? Did they cancel already?
But I know that's what I was saying.
Suppose it don't snow.
Then you got a good day off.
You got a day off. We'll enjoy it, and thank you so much, thanks for all you do.
President. Well, I'll tell you, but anyway, I do want to congratulate all of you for being involved and engaged, because the future of this nation rests on your shoulders, people like you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Six. And first one is ordinance, I'm in Chappaferi, solid base, I'm in one, in general, second reading.
Sure, absolutely.
No one besides Mr. President?
And this is a second?
This is a second reading.
Okay, everyone, basically, there's one change, and that's litter. There's litter in our parks and our public places. That's the only change, that's what it's for. There are fines for littering in public places. Unfortunately, what people may do in their own backyard is out of our control in some ways unless it gets overruled. So that's a basic change, litter in our public places, parks, sidewalks, et cetera, and there is a fine attached, so. With that, looking for a motion. This is a second hearing, this would be final passage of this.
Mr. Chairman, just a question. Mr. Chairman, I reviewed this and I'm just, I'm concerned when it comes to anything financial, the, the, the city on first offense, Mr. Chairman, is still a, a $250 fine, and for each additional offense, $500 plus cost of collecting, removing, and dumping. So if somebody throws a piece of paper on the ground compared to a contract of dumping, they get hit with the same $250 fine on the first offense and $500 fine additionally for any additional offense. I'm concerned that we're, we're costing residents more and more just to live here. I can understand fineing. I can understand that if somebody breaks the law, they need to pay the consequences, but setting up fines, to me, seeming to be a little exorbitant to our populace. I have a problem with that, Mr. Chairman, that the fines are too high.
I would like to interject. First of all, you said the first time is absolutely correct. This is basically, is geared towards contractors. We've had incidents in the city where contractors have actually dumped debris on dead-end streets. That's, that's basically what this is for. As far as stone paper, I think common sense will tend to play. I don't think anybody's going to jump out of a police car or highway department truck and try to issue a fine during the, it's common sense. So that's basically for the contractor.
Mr. President, the origin of this ordinance came from the nuisance task force. He had the Department of Public Works who found a box truck operator dumping entire truckloads of material onto Condo Street, which is your board, Mr. Luzier. And we had no remedy that would have provided adequate sanction for that, so we looked to VEM standards and state law and found that our ordinance was in fact outdated, and so this is an update in the ordinance with VEM and state law.
If I can ask the solicitor, the fine would encompass the same if it was a contractor or an individual throwing something out of his car?
Well, every fine has the discretion of a public official, and so while there may be a fine in a law, it's up to the city staff and city lawyers and city judges who hear fines like this to use their discretion to ensure that, that the laws are properly followed. In this case, there was no sanction adequate for the worst-case scenario, the dumping of massive amounts of garbage on city streets, and that was the intention of this ordinance.
I fully agree with that, Mr. Solicitor, but also in consideration of that of due, of due process, is exactly what I was referring to when it came to tobacco, of having the consideration to not extend a total fine on a violation of a first offense. So that's why discretion is, is necessary on all levels of the city council or any judicial body in the city. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We're still looking for a motion.
Would you be more amenable then to a tiered system, $100 for the first offense, $250 for the second, and $500 for any subsequent offense?
On which one are you talking about?
What, do we just?
On this, yes, a tiered. That's what's not, that's what's done also on, on state fines. And if the actions are egregious to a point of a contractor, then you also charge them with cleanup and other costs.
That's fair. You can't part there.
So why don't you propose the amendment for the tiered system?
Upon recommendation, Councilman Acosta, I amend, move to amend the ordinance on the fines to establish a tier with the discretion of the authority judicial. First, a warning. Secondly, a $100 fine. Thirdly, a $250 fine. And fourth, the option of a $500 fine on various or numerous offenses. I make that a motion to amend.
Sorry, Mr. President. Could you just, after the second, what was the third tier?
First is a warning. We should always establish a warning with the discretion.
Second is $100.
Second is 100. Third is 250, and multiple offenses could be up to $500.
I, I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Matt. So current city law has a first fine of $250. So this motion will effectively water down and dilute the city's ability to enforce litter laws and sentencing laws.
No, you could still enforce it. You could still issue a penalty. The discretion is up to the authority. If they wish to, because it's an egregious offense to issue a $250 fine, the authority who is ruling can say, I want to reduce it to 100. Or if it's a $500 fine, it's the discretion of the authority who is going to meet to decide the case. So you still have that. So you still have that option. If the authority issued a $500 fine, they have the option to bring it down to a $100 or a $250, or even a warning, if they, in their discretion. So we're not changing it, we're just giving them the flexibility to be considerate if the consideration is necessary. It may not be.
So Solicitor, you said the current ordinance is $250, so what was the problem with the anecdote you shared? The proposed change is to add a second offense of $500, so we have very limited city staff with which to track this stuff down, and when we do find a perpetrator, which is very, very rare, we need to have the tool, the toolbox right away to address it. And in that case, the only tool we have is a $250 fine, which for this operator was not something that was going to stop them from doing that. So the amendment would add a subsequent fine that also allow us to add up all the costs that we have to spend picking up all the garbage, hauling away the garbage and disposing it, and adding that to the ticket. The last section of the ordinance, D two, one of the things we've been doing with all housing, environmental infections, is allowing appeals to the municipal court, so that if the person who receives the fine feel aggrieved, they can go to court, and the judge could reduce it, could dismiss it, could only give a warning. It gives that discretion to the judge, but it does give the city additional tools to really whack someone under the color of law if we find a perpetrator at the first instance.
You could still do that.
Can't do that now.
Under the amendment, you could still do that. You could still issue a $500 fine, and you could still reduce it in the discretion of the judge, and you could still charge any additional cost for cleanup, which is already in your proposal. We're not changing it.
President, I don't agree with the warnings.
I don't either.
That's an option, yeah.
First of all, Mr. Lozier, a lot of research was done by the city solicitor. I know the highway department is very concerned, and, I mean, come on, contractor comes in and dumps their material, and they're going to get away with a warning or a minimum, minimum fine? Again, I think it's common sense. If it's a contractor, it's going to be $250. If somebody throws a piece of paper out of their car window, it's not going to be $250. Somebody may, the police officer sees it and may say, "Excuse me, you can't do that, why don't you pick it up?" Nobody throwing a piece of paper out of a window is going to get fined $250. It's called common sense, Mr. Lozier. I think this ordinance has gone too far to take a step backwards, and again, in fact, that happened on Conduit Street. That's a true story, we're talking.
I know, they were before the.
It happened.
But it doesn't, doesn't deny the officer to take that action. We're not taking anything away from that. If the authority wants to issue a $250 fine, they can, but the judge has discretion to reduce it. If they want to issue a $100 fine for a minor violation, or a warning to somebody in a car throwing something out of a window, they can do that too. I'm giving the flexibility, so that can be allowed. I'm adding tools to the box, not taking away.
There is a motion on the table.
So Lozier, a motion, an amendment to the ordinance. There has been no second.
We have a motion and no second, the motion passes.
Thank you, members of the council.
Now with your motion to approve second passage and final passage. Motion by Councilman, second by Councilman Montezaro, Councilwoman Fonseca, and Councilman Franklin Solano. Roll call vote.
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Councilman Acosta?
Yes.
Councilman Fito?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fonseca?
Yes.
Councilman Lozier?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Solano?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Next item.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lozier, we're moving along.
Mr. Chairman, on this item, I have a question. On this item, Mr. Chairman, on my vote, on my vote, Mr. Chairman, as I requested in.
One of the voters, Mr. President.
You've already voted on the vote?
I'm questioning, I'm clarifying my vote, Mr. Chairman, I have a right to do that. I'm clarifying my vote. I have a right to do that, Mr. Chairman, that's why I was getting your attention. What I'm doing, Mr. Chairman, is I'm clarifying my vote that this vote and my amendments, that they be fully incorporated in the minutes. In the past, my amendments have not been reflected in my, in the minutes. I wish any comments that are made, especially amendments or points of order or discussions and questions, that they be elaborated on and put in the minutes. But that's my request again, Mr. Chairman, thanks.
Ordinance amendment chapter forty, fire prevention and protection, R four three, fire alarm system introduction.
Introduction, so introduce.
Ordinance amendment chapter forty, Central Falls Development Agency, free development area, lead development plan, his introduction.
So introduce.
Mr. Chairman, can I request that we get a deep, a better map from the planning department? It's a. Yeah.
The one they just gave us today, I have a.
Resolution is supported eight, seven, two, six, one, alcohol and beverages, retail access.
Hey, good evening, Dr. Fine.
Good evening.
Thanks for all the fine work you do.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to appear before you again. I'm, I want to introduce my colleague Scott Hewitt, who has been our data analyst, and has spent a huge amount of time answering Councilman Acosta's very good question. And I think what you'll see, and is before you, in this analysis, it will start while the PowerPoint is getting started, what you'll see is a very precise analysis of the question of when alcohol intoxication begin, based on time of death.
So to answer your question, what we did was we input all the alcohol runs made by Central Falls, EMS, and other county air points, et cetera, out of image trend, which is what's the data platform that they still order Monday day. And it came out to 247 total runs by EMS for alcohol in the air point, et cetera. If you remember, this whole thing was kind of spurred by an observation that there was a big increase in rate of EMS alcohol runs in hours that had alcohol, the summer months or summer hours, versus the months that didn't have these standard summer hours. And it comes out to about a 30% increase in the number of, or the rate of EMS runs for alcohol in those months that had summer hours compared to those that don't. And also, we did a little statistical test, with about 90% confidence, it looks like it's not just random variance, can't be too definitive because of the data. So we mapped out all of the runs that we collected across time of day. We grouped all the run times, three-hour blocks, it just makes it a lot easier and smoother interpretation. And it's basically, it starts at 6:00 a.m., is when the first block starts, and then the last block ends at 5:59 a.m. And pretty straightforward, you see, you know, you start getting an increase that around 12:00 p.m., the kind of peaks in the 6:00, 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. time, starts going down again, except we see a bit of an uptick in the 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. range. So then the next question, well, the opposite question is, you know, is there a difference of when they're taking place and the months of summer hours versus those without? And actually, to our surprise, we saw that that increase looks to be mainly occurring in the afternoon and early evening. So we see a real big spike at around 12:00 p.m., and, you know, pretty steadily going up, went up, went up, until that 6:00, 8:00 p.m. block, then starts to come down, and then we see that bump around the time the bars goes, and it continues to go down. But we don't see that in a, which, we don't see that huge bump in the months without the summer hours. And one of our possible interpretations could be that the additional open hours in the morning are giving some people a chance to ramp up, that starts to hit home around 12:00 p.m., and then accumulate, yes, the big ones. There's also a question about, that was raised last time, of like, where are these, where's this happening? You know, where's this consumption that's usually just happening, happening in people's homes? Is it happening in public places? So we looked at the addresses that were associated with each run, and we grouped them into categories, and we found that about 50% were occurred in places that were likely in public. Fifty cadet, though, you know, this is just what's at the address, it doesn't tell us like it wasn't out of the EMS that responded inside or outside. But within that orange slice, you know, it's people who are picked up at the Central Falls P, you know, out in stores, like Dollar Tree came up a lot, a couple of the other businesses on Dexter Street, outside, you know, over here, in front of Yanks Park, and those types of locations, or just kind of the street on intersections. Next slide. So we also were interested in who's doing the runs, and we found that there's a small group of people who had toward more runs throughout the year, and they accounted for over half the runs for alcohol. We call these folks repeaters. So they had a big impact on EMS use for alcohol during the year. And we looked at how their activity is versus in the summer versus what was last summer. So every, you know, overall, there's an increase in EMS activity for alcohol in the summer runs, there's none, but we really see it impact most of those repeat users. They take a 51% run in their rate of alcohol runs when we had summer hours versus not. And then if you look at the repeat users versus the people who had a single episode in the summer months, you see that those are folks who seem to be driving that big increase in those earlier portion of the day. Next slide. And also, those folks are responsible for a majority of the runs that are happening at most likely public places. Next. So that's a brief summary, you know, we're seeing an increase in rate of alcohol runs by EMS in this summer hour months. This increase is going to be mostly occurring from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., 50% runs are occurring in places that are suggested public intoxication. The repeat people account for a big chunk of the runs, and these are people who likely have alcohol use disorders, and maybe seem to be most affected by the expansion of summer hours or of liquor store hours during the summer. Next slide. However, you know, it's not just them, we see an increase among everybody, but there are ones who kind of have the biggest spike.
Thank you so much for the additional research. I think Jonathan's happy with that, he's smiling, that's a good thing. Mr. Chairman? Let us, let Dr. Fine speak, please.
Well, I think, I think that sums the situation. I think this is very good evidence, that having summer hours increases public intoxication, increases the number of transports for intoxication. And the opportunity is to follow in the footsteps of Providence and reduce those summer hours so that we don't have that trouble this summer's coming.
Can we go back to slide four, please? So looking at the data, I think kind of confirms my suspicion from last meeting, right? There's a slight increase there, but really, this is essentially a parabola. And what we want to do to address the problem is get it where the slope is the steepest. The problem isn't the morning, it's not at night, right? And that's, this is what we talked about last meeting, where we shouldn't be cutting the back out. That said, I'd be pressed to find a liquor store that opened at 7:00 a.m. I don't actually think any of the businesses take advantage of that. Not that I've gone lucky, but I do think that I, I was speaking for myself in terms of a voting member of the council, be more amenable to addressing the open hours rather than the closing hours, because the data just doesn't speak to us having a closing hour problem.
And I have had the opportunity to talk to Representative Montano, and she would be open to a resolution from this council that supports that piece of the legislation she submitted.
And that would be 9:00 a.m., is that correct?
That would be opening at 9:00.
9:00 a.m., but still closing at 10:00. It looks 9:00 a.m. here.
Mr. Chairman? Could you, in your research, have you differentiated rescue calls of individuals coming from residents, coming from?
Yeah, so that's this spike here, they have a pie graph?
Let me, let me finish my question. Rescue calls regarding alcohol that differentiates a person who's picked up coming from a restaurant, coming from a liquor store, coming from a beer and wine establishment, coming from a residence, coming from a public function. Unfortunately, we have a number of activities in the city that do serve liquor. This ordinance, or this resolution centers on package stores, only package stores, but it doesn't differentiate individuals' drinking habits from any other.
So yeah, if you don't have any data at points, this person initiated consumption here, run happened here, whatever happened. What we can do is that we can say, you know, where they're getting picked up, and what is at the address where they're getting picked up, which is this one here.
But we're attacking the hours of liquor stores as the culprits in this support. Now, Mr. Chairman, just a question of the, at the last meeting, knowing that this was being deferred, I requested that the four package stores be sent a notice and invited to come to the meeting to address this issue, or answer any questions, or present any information on their behalf. Has a letter gone out inviting them to this meeting?
No, because I don't think they do the research that Dr. Fine does. What's the point?
The point is if we are addressing strictly Class Eight package stores.
How they go to know the record of rescue runs?
No, we are looking to diminish their hours, Mr. Chairman. So we're affecting their business. As I recommended and asked at each of the package stores, only four of them, that they be notified and given the opportunity to come tonight to listen to this, and to maybe make a presentation on what the time difference does to their business. That's what my intent was, Mr. Chairman, that they should have an opportunity, and I thought we were giving them an opportunity to come and address this, Mr. Chairman.
Captain?
Thanks again, guys. I, you know, I really appreciate this work and this data. I have a question about your thoughts on the future policy related to this. Frankly, we see the spike in the slope, can you go to slide five? Regardless of winter or summer, it's obviously worse in the, in the summer, but it's still there in the winter at those same times. Now, my sense is that this is correlated to the fact that it's just an ice rock, right? You have more to do, so sit outside and drink. I definitely do in the summer. You know, what has been the thought of changing from the nine to later, to 10, to 11? You know, I, I only mention that because I went online, and most of these liquor stores report their opening hours at nine regardless. So I'm not sure that many people are taking advantage of the 7:00 a.m. open. So if we really want to address the issue, I think it means pushing both summer and winter hours to 10 or 11 a.m.
Remember that the limiting factor is the legislature. The legislature, not the city sits out. And so this was an attempt to modify the law to fit Central Falls. And the opportunity, I think, to change hours much more than that is probably somewhat limited.
So can I, can I ask, in the interest of, you know, using this work that we've done and continuing to move it forward, we set this baseline and we're able to pass this. You've got the formulas running, so you just need to add new data. For next year, can we get an update to see if we have any changes? And if not, I think we have something to go to the State House with to say like, hey, this didn't fully address our warning problem, we need more.
Absolutely, and we're also, I hope, going to be able to do, we're going to, we're thinking about doing a study that looks at the number of total alcohol establishments per 10,000 population, and compare that to average annual income in each location, noticing that there's actually one dry town in Rhode Island.
Rhode Island, right?
That would be Harrington. They may well have, but that's data that we'd like to look at, because our rough sense is there may well be an association that. Which is our rough sense, is there may well be an association that people who, people in places where there's lots of alcohol availability are more likely to be people living in poverty. And the question is whether you can switch that around by being thoughtful about alcohol availability. As you mentioned in our last meeting, there's probably also an opportunity to exercise what the city really does have control over, which is the number of licensed establishments.
I noticed that according to the data, intoxication occurs only during summer hours. Increased thirty-eight percent. I don't know if there's a way just to try it during summer hours?
Well, I mean, I'm not sure I understand your question. Intoxication occurs in both winter and summer.
It's a three thirty-eight percent during summer hours.
It increases thirty-eight percent during summer hours. And the open question is whether that is because of summer hours or because of summer. But certainly, you know, the association is pretty suggestive. And, you know, there's reason, I think, from a public policy perspective, to try this and see what happens over a year. And come back with data in a year and see if we've had the effect that we want to have.
So basically, we change the hours in the morning to nine AM, correct?
Well, that would be, you know, I think there's a resolution in front of you, and I think if you wanted to do that, you would need to modify the resolution somewhat. And that would then give Representative Montano what she needs to now get to support the General Assembly.
And that's part of the modification would be nine AM rather than seven AM.
Well, it would be, you know, open at nine, but then, you know, if you wanted to do it this way, close at ten instead of at nine as this resolution. And the legislation proposes.
Nine AM to ten.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to amend. amend the resolution.
From what section this was in?
From opening no earlier than nine AM in the morning and leaving the rest alone.
I think that's what we're saying right now, right?
Yes, making a motion to amend.
There's nothing to amend, that's what we're saying. I think that's.
But we're not changing, we're not changing the closing.
Eleven.
We're leaving the closing as it is. We're only amending that they can't open before nine.
Yeah, that's agreed, because I think the closing is the hang-up here. I think the closing is ten PM, correct?
No, in the summer, it's eleven.
Eleven. At state law.
So I think part of the confusion here, Solicitor, I think we need your help, is we can only amend our resolution. We can't amend her bill. So we have to change the language in our resolution that actually doesn't say we support House Bill seven two six one. We could say we support a version of House Bill two seven six one that stipulates the conditions we're talking about now, correct?
That's a good point, Councilman. What I would recommend is the first clause where it says now therefore be it resolved, it currently reads now therefore be it resolved that the City Council hereby supports H seven two six one that restricts the liquor store hours in Central Falls, comma, on the condition that the legislation is amended to. And what I'm hearing is on the condition that the legislation is amended to solely provide the liquor stores shall not be open before nine AM, period.
Yes. I amend my motion to them, Chairman.
And everyone's happy with the closing time?
Well, yeah, we have to stipulate that too, because she has it as closing time as that.
She has it at ten.
No, she has it at nine. It's the next.
We're going to go to ten?
No, we're leaving it the way state law is, so we're just not addressing closing.
Just changing, which I think that's what we talked about before anyway, but we didn't have time and that's why.
We can increase it with no change to closing time? All right, so.
You don't really have to, because.
I motion to make an amendment to the resolution to reflect the following. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Central Falls hereby supports H seven two six one that restricts the liquor store hours in Central Falls, comma, on the condition.
On the condition that the legislation is amended solely.
On the condition that the legislation is amended to solely address the.
The opening hours.
Opening hours before nine AM and no further changes to be made. To the closing hours.
Motion to amend as read by the Solicitor.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilman Acosta, as read by the city Solicitor. We have a second.
Second.
Second is by Councilman Figueroa and Councilman Solano and Councilman Mazero. So basically, all we did was change the opening to nine AM. Very simple.
Up again, step one.
Yes, step one. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Chair will tie. Nays. Here we go, seeing the ayes have it. Thank you, people. Thank you for your work.
Thanks to the council. If I may, can I just ask for a round of applause for Scott Hewitt.
I thought you were going to come back like Columbo and say one more thing.
Doctor, so you're in Asia, right? You'll come back in Asia for this, so.
Thank you.
President, can we ask up Acosta's listening to?
Oh, absolutely. Sure.
Okay, it is the resolution supportive of H seven five zero one and two thousand eighteen twenty four one nine, entitled connect relating to elections, conduct of election in forty eight thirty five.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, thank you so much. Thank you to the council, Councilwoman Acosta for the resolution relating to every director of election. And I'm here today to have Senator State Ina O'Gara seeking your support for House Bill seven five oh one and Senate Bill twenty four nineteen, which is formalizing the early voting process. As we know, the early voting process right now is called the emergency mail ballot process. Basically, a voter comes into City Hall twenty days before an election, submits an application to apply for a mail ballot. That mail ballot then is entered into the central voter registration center system where workers here within issue a ballot, the voter votes the ballot, puts it in an envelope, the envelope is then signed, noted rise, and then that is put in another envelope and then handed delivered to the board of elections. These legislation actually would change that process and it would provide early voting where, again, a voter comes into City Hall twenty days prior to and presents their ID. We're now using electronic poll books. They would scan their ID, confirm the voter is eligible to vote, it's handed their ballot, and the ballot is actually entered and placed into the actual voting machine. This process is efficient in the sense that it does increase voter confidence, because now a voter is actually putting in their ballot into the machine as opposed to putting their ballot in the mail. There is less paperwork for workers. There's no more application, there's no delivering of the mail ballots to the board of elections. It's a quicker voting experience for your city voters, because again, they have twenty days prior to the day of the election to come in and actually vote. It was also convenient voting for individuals that may not be able to make it during the day or again on election day. They can actually come in on a Saturday and Sunday before the election, and that's what the bill provides. There is less stress on, for voters on election day, because you have less lines, because now individuals can vote earlier. There's also a reduction in errors on election day, because if there are any issues with a voter, they do have twenty days, obviously, to make those corrections, and they can actually come in and vote if there's any concerns with their identification and can be addressed. And again, with the production, with the providing of the electronic poll books and ballot at demand, your city clerks here will be able to go through the process much quicker than the normal, what we have now, which is the paper ballots. I do want to extend thank you to Sonia and Alberto, who work closely with our office, and they can attest to 2016 guidelines of people that were coming in to vote during the emergency mail ballot period. So again, we thank you for this opportunity and looking for your support in this piece of legislation.
Thank you for your patience and thank you for, that sounds like it's going to be streamlined, very easy. Like you said, no pressures, twenty days prior to a primary or a general election, correct?
Yes.
And voter ID, do your ballot goes into the machine.
Yes.
And I like the idea of no more envelopes, because nobody knows what happens with envelopes. People collect envelopes for other people, etc. And as far as Sagar and Alberto, they're getting a razor on the fourth claw. Anyway, thank you, good job. Thank you for being here.
I got a question for her. Besides this ordinance, which is, I think is a great idea, the people who are not able to come to the voting place at all and they want a mail ballot, that still are in the bus.
That's correct. So we still have the normal mail ballot process. This is just the emergency mail ballot period, which initiates twenty days prior to. They will be, they're doing the same process, it's just not applying for a ballot. They actually will get their ballot and they will insert it into a DS two hundred, which is the voting.
Okay. Well, I don't know if it is more for this question, but if not, I would like to make a motion to approve.
I have a question.
Second.
Under discussion, Mr. Lozier. Do you have a motion by Councilman Solano, second by Councilman Nolan Franciscan, to approve under discussion, Mr. Lozier?
Yes, thank you all. This is something that's been discussed for many years. Could you quickly answer a couple of questions? The timing of this, when would this take effect?
We're looking for 2019. So nothing's going to happen now in 2018. Again, this is something that we're looking for starting in 2019.
Twenty nineteen. And early voting is only at City Hall?
That's correct.
No other locations? You can't?
No, it's in twenty days. So it's the, what occurs now. So we have emergency mail ballot period occurring at town halls and the city halls. So this would just eliminate the paper process.
So you don't apply for a paper ballot or emergency ballot. You can come into City Hall twenty days beforehand to go and vote. What is the, just the timing on weekends?
It would be, I believe, twelve to four, what the bill says, yep, twelve.
Twelve to four.
Yep, the weekend, Saturday, Sunday before.
Only the Saturday and Sunday before?
Yes.
I'm asking these questions for people in the audience also, so they don't have these. And it's only the weekend before the election, Saturday and Sunday?
That's correct.
And can you vote early on Monday?
You can vote early, you can vote up until four o'clock PM the day before the election.
So it carries over from Saturday, Sunday, and voting also on Monday till four o'clock?
That's correct.
If you cannot make it on, and the timing of the elections, and the time of the elections, from seven o'clock to eight o'clock?
On election day.
On election day is the same.
That's correct. Everything stays the same.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you again.
Thank you so much for the seventy-eight.
Yeah, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Chair will tie. Nays. Here we go, seeing the ayes have it. So passed, thank you.
Hi, and we resolution approving high priority repairs to Orbison Elementary School and Calhoun Middle School.
And I believe the superintendent's been waiting patiently, and here he comes. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your.
President, I would like to ask you to help.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fine.
Chairman, can I ask for a recess just for two minutes?
Oh.
Recession?
I'm here.
Okay.
I have no school tomorrow.
We have two.
You're already booked?
No work tomorrow, really.
Well, I'm here.
I just have to pass.
We need to, we need to.
Do we have any cups?
That was a long time.
I didn't know this was possible.
I mean, I've got it, it's my place.
So we didn't have rest.
Come on, Bob.
We're going to get out of here.
Cameras still on.
Get that raise going up.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, Mr. President, Superintendent of Schools in Central Falls, coming this evening to ask for your support with our continued work on the capital improvement plan for the school district. As you remember, last year I gave approval to request your support in starting a phase one process for the emergency repairs at the schools. This is the second phase of this work, and last year, with your help and support, we were able to do $3.1 million worth of work to our schools. And I'm happy to report that we have now completed all of the work, unfortunately. It took a little longer, as some of you know, the situation we had at the high school when we went to patch the roof. We definitely had a lot more work than we expected, but we are now in the space and all of that has been repaired. We're now moving on to other items that are in our five-year capital plan. You may recall from my presentation that we had around $20 million worth of emergency repairs that the Jacobs Report, which is the state's report, identified for Central Falls Public Schools. We have been little by little, with the support of the Department of Education, with the support of the City Council and the city of Central Falls, we have been able to begin to take care of some of those issues. So tonight before you, with what I believe is good news, the Department of Education initially approved a $2.3 million approval of funds, so that we are able to tackle two major issues that we have in two of our schools. And just to remind you, the way that the funding for construction works at the Department of Education Building Authority is that we initially go and we ask for what is called the necessity of improvements, and we are giving housing aid. So that is monies, and in this case, they gave us $2.3 million. What would happen is that the city, in this case, will have to put up the money upfront, and then they reimburse the $2.3 million. Then we go into a second process where we apply for capital funds. And the good news that I mentioned is that we have received approval for capital funds, so that the city does not have to put out the $2.3 million upfront. Basically, what it does is it provides the city with an opportunity to get reimbursed on the amount that the city is responsible for. So in this case, the $2.3, to be exact, $2,304,500 worth of construction projects that have been approved, we are eligible to receive reimbursements in the amount of 96.1%. So through this capital fund, the state of Orlando will be able to reimburse the city of Central Falls an amount of $2,228,452. And the way that that reimbursement works is on an ongoing basis. So as we finish a project, every month, we get a bill, we send it to RIDE, RIDE reimburses the city. So the output is not a lot, and the best part about this is that the city, the most that the city will need to put up is $76,048. So for us to leverage the $2.3 million, the city's investment is $76,048 maximum. And I wanted to clarify and emphasize maximum because since the projects that we're doing, you see on the right-hand side of that presentation, there are a number of projects that we're focusing on, Calcut Middle School and Robertson Elementary School. There's two projects that have to deal with asbestos. Anytime you deal with asbestos or energy efficiency, the city is eligible for an additional 1% reimbursement. And so in this case, rather than being reimbursed 96.1%, because we're doing asbestos, we're eligible to receive 97.1% reimbursement. So that $76,000 could go down. And the reason I say eligible to receive and that it could go down is because we will need to qualify for the reimbursements. So the maximum amount that the city will need to pay in order to leverage this $2.3 million is $76,048. And I will direct you to the right-hand side of the presentation. Basically, what we're trying to do is continue the work that we did at Calcut this last year. One of the projects that was approved last year under the $3 million was to do some proactive work on the Calcut roof. We were able to lay out some new membrane that really guaranteed that roof for an additional 15 years. And also, we put in new rooftop units that help with all the HVAC system and the ventilation. So now, what this allows to do is to do the controls for the RTUs, the electrical repairs that go along with the RTUs, and also some minor masonry and structural repairs, again, dealing with the HVAC systems and the roof work. The asbestos is preventive work that we want to do, and it's really around the flooring. We know that there is no issue at this point, but again, we're trying to be proactive, and since we know that the flooring has asbestos, we want to be able to close the school down this summer, Calcut, and do this remediation flooring. And then at Robertson is to do some exterior door replacements, some electrical repairs, and also some minor asbestos work, we will not need to shut down this winter, summer. We may need to shut down part of it for a week. And then there's also some mechanical roomwork that needs to be done. You have on the second page, the latter basically detailing from our consultants detailing that work. And then the last two pages is the commitment from the Department of Education showing the city that they will enter into an agreement with us to reimburse the $2,228,452. So to wrap up my presentation, I am personally asking for your approval to leverage the $2.3 million to ask the city to invest a maximum of $76,048 for this project.
Thank you very much. Alan?
Thank you for your presentation, Superintendent, for your work. I think investing in our schools is one of the safest and best investments for our community. My question is really, I think for Lynn or Josh, right now, from where would this money come from within our budget?
Good evening, Glenn Mulgane, City of Central Falls. Yes, so probably with the school closing and the timing, we will, I will probably add that to the capital budget or the surplus capital fund from the capital budget.
Right. This will kick in for next year.
Yeah, potentially, yeah. By the time the first, basically how it works is like, as the superintendent told, invoice gets to ride, RIDE gives us the money, we add our eight or 10 or 12 grand, you know, per monthly invoice, and then pay the vendor. And that's basically the process. So in this case, we assume somewhere in the 60s with the asbestos. So, you know, if it goes over three to five invoices, we're talking, you know, 12, 13 grand in invoice, so I'll be, we'll get kicked in for a month, probably starting in July, you know, when all the work is done.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, as Mr. Acosta just said, investment in our school system is the best investment that we can do. And I'd like to ask a question to the superintendent. He said that to qualify for next a 1% on the, on the, we already have to pay $74,048, right? But, but if we are working with asbestos, say we qualify for another 1%, which is lower than the cost of that we have to reimburse, which is sound excellent to me. I mean, it's like no pain having an over $2 million finance for the state of, and then we pay $76,000. It sounds great to me, so I don't know if Mr. Lozier, I'm not caught, but I would like to make a motion to approve.
I have other questions.
Well, we'll do it under discussion. A motion approved by Councilman Solano, we have a second. Seconded by Councilman Acosta. Now, under discussion, Mr. Lozier.
Yes, Mr. Superintendent, I know last year I was very concerned by your report, the cost to the city. I have to say tonight, I am very happy at your presentation, other many other questions I have.
Say thank you.
Write it down, it happened once. I compliment you. My impression originally was that we were at a 91% reimbursement rate. Originally, that's what we discussed. You informed us now that we went to a 96.1% reimbursement rate, and because of asbestos, we can go to a 97.1% reimbursement rate. Your plans, and does this include all costs, swap costs also, architectural, engineering, constructional engineers, supervisors, and this is the full cost of all aspects of the project?
Yes, it is, and this includes also the work of our consultants on the project, anything we needed to bring in for these construction projects, it's all included in this. Good question.
And when do you propose to start the projects? In the summertime, right after school closes?
Yeah, so if I receive approval tonight, then I'll go in front of our board trustees. Once I receive approval from the board, then we'll go out to bid, and we will spend the month of April really doing bids. We should award this right after that, and we hope to start on July 1st.
Okay, just one other question. I know I'm getting ahead of myself. You did such a tremendous job on this, Mr. Superintendent, I got to congratulate you and your staff. But in the future plans, just to think of the future, besides this work, what is the most immediate needs in the school department, in school buildings?
Thank you, Mr. Lozier. So we do have, like I said, around $20 million that have been identified in emergency repairs for the district. This is part of the comprehensive report that they did under the Jacobs Report. And so what we have done is we have gone after any priority one issues. Between what we did last year and this year, we are almost through all of our priority one, and so we'll now move to priority two. So the kind of work that you see with the electrical repairs, the doors, windows, energy efficiency, basically, is our next level of work. So electrical and energy efficiency will be the next level of work. We wanted to do roofs, and we wanted to do the HVAC systems, and then, so we did that year. Now we're doing asbestos. And again, to be proactive and preventative, and the next one is going to be electrical and any energy efficiency. So we'll do this again.
Does any of these funds go towards?
That was your last question, Mr. Lozier. We'll play back to the video if you wish.
That's fine, Mr. Chairman, if you want to hold it back, that's fine, Mr. Chairman.
Would these repairs put out for bid for, for big, for other contractors, or is he our only contractor?
In terms of, you mean, the general architect?
Yes.
So he was the architect of the project that did the asbestos. So at this point, for the actual contractor to do the work, we will go up to bid. So this is part of the phase one that I came before you last year, that's what this worked. So it's a need to set up a bidding. At this point, we'll now go up to bid.
My question will be in the same directions about when you go to bid for contractors, and when you contract, the contractor come to do the work. If, if they are not for Central Falls, do you require to then to hire people for Central Falls?
So what we do in terms of the purchasing, and it's really procured through the city, we do look at the percentage of subcontractors that they may have from Central Falls. We do look at the percentage of MBE, minority business, the women's business, that the subcontractors may bring, and then they put all that together in a package, and that is part of the procurement position, so.
Thank you. One last question, Mr. Chairman. Since our councilman asked an additional question, I just have one basic question as to Superintendent. Earlier in the evening, we discussed security. Is there any security concerns or upgrades that you would be looking into, especially what's taking place around the country? To our school, I requested that the police do a risk assessment of all public buildings, city schools, we should also look at charter schools, but is there anything that you are looking at proactively for a security concern after what's your place?
Thank you for your question. Certainly, we have looked at the concerns that we have, and there are some gaps in our security plans that we would like to supply. We started working with the Central Falls Police Department, we started working with the city of Central Falls and the Department of Education. We're all in contact in terms of what can be done proactively. I actually presented at the last board meeting a very comprehensive plan for how we can Earlier in the evening, we discussed security. Is there any security concerns or upgrades that you would be looking into, especially what's taking place around the country? To our school, I requested that the police do a risk assessment of all public buildings, city schools. We should also look at charter schools. But is there anything that you are looking at proactively for a security concern? After what your place?
Thank you for your question. Certainly, we have looked at the concerns that we have, and there are some gaps in our security plans that we would like to expedite. We started working with the Central Falls Police Department. We started working with the City of Central Falls and the Department of Education. We're all in contact in terms of what can be done proactively. I actually presented at the last board meeting a very comprehensive plan for how we can make our schools safer. And so I'm more than happy to send that presentation, send the copies to all of you, so you can see the work that we intend to do. But I'm more than happy to do that.
Thank you, Vic. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, nays, hearing unseen, ayes, ahs. Thank you again for your time and patience. I'd like to...
I think he's got to go the furthest. Don't hurt.
Oh, okay.
I wasn't going to speak on either one. I was just saying, I wrote a memo, Bob Daddy has a memo. He just couldn't come tonight. It's only five hundred dollars. There's three memos.
We're not there yet.
We're not there.
I'll do I and C, the business, Mr. President. There are two licenses, one is entertainment per year. It is for the student bonus, Central Falls High School class of 2018.
Hi. Hi, Council President, hi, Councilmember. So I'm here because myself and my fellow classmates would like to have our ten-year reunion at the Carr's Wall Tower. So we are hoping we can get approval tonight. We are hoping to start at six P.M., and maybe end at eleven P.M. So we were signed off by the police department to have a detail from six-thirty to eleven-thirty. So we do know we need a detail for that reunion, and we are expected to have an attendance of eighty people. It might be way less than that. And I think, I don't know if there's any other questions at this point.
Any liquor?
Yes.
We're hoping to have liquor. We have, we're looking at caterers, so they will have their own insurance, things like that. But we are hoping to have maybe like beer and wine, something like that.
Mr. Chairman, I know I raised this with the city solicitor in the past, but anytime we have liquor on public property, to issue a liquor license, a class F or F1 is normally necessary?
If it's helpful, we do have the support of the Central Falls Alumni Association, which is based on...
It's a separate license. I don't have a problem with that, Mr. Chairman, but I think if they are going to have liquor, the city council should authorize a liquor license to be included with the entertainment license.
Well, we can entertain, we got the majors who want to speak on the entertainment license tonight. As far as the liquor, we can get on the next council meeting. As the liquor board will take up the F1 liquor license. We've got plenty of time.
Yeah.
It's only March, we've got plenty of time. April, we can take up the F1 license on a liquor fortune.
What is... I missed, I missed part of that conversation, I'm sorry. But is there a need to get a separate liquor license? Because the catering company, I thought about doing the class reunion and using Emirates, and they have all their people as safe serve certified and all that.
It's a separate license. Serving liquor in the city, we normally, historically, you apply for a either class F or a class F1 license. One is just bear in mind, the owner is full beverage.
I think we have an update, I'm sorry, by city solicitor, by the way. Sure. Catering license is a class P state license, which is authorized to serve alcohol. If you, you should provide proof of that with your application, along with your caterer's proof of insurance.
So that's, that's fine. We can approve this pending the paperwork at the Sonia that was just mentioned by the city solicitor.
So we're going to make a motion to approve? Now do so.
Motion by Councilman Solano, seconded by Councilwoman Fonseca. Again, under further discussion, hearing unseen, no vote.
Councilman Fer.
Yes.
Councilman Acosta.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaro.
Yes.
Councilman Fonseca.
Yes.
Councilman Lozier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lozier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Solano.
Yes.
Thank you. So just get that paperwork together.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fonseca, for clearing that up. And Matthew, both also clear it up. Thank you.
Entertainment for, for family, family for Rockwell. We use some promotions for carnival, for getting carnival parties, all that.
Hi, my name is Meloey. I am from Rockwell, uh, located in Rockwell, Moses, tonight. As far as the carnival goes, I am, as far as I know, we haven't had any issues in the past. And we do set a buyer detail, and we also set a lease detail.
It's that time of year, yeah?
Yes.
I hope you don't get snow.
Hope not either.
It may still be on the ground by then.
Yes, I know. We've had that in past years.
But again, I was going to ask the major that same question. I know we've never had a problem in the past.
With the security details, there's nothing detailed to handle, and we will put some extra traffic enforcement out. I do consider that time of year being the start of spring, so I don't anticipate any problems.
And the other question I always ask is the inspection of the equipment is done by...
The state.
The state, okay.
Yes.
Do you approve? Yep, we have a motion.
Second.
Councilmen, the second of the Councilman DeGaro, and Councilman Solano, and I think you're the Councilwoman Fonseca. Under further discussion, hearing unseen, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, nays, hearing unseen, none. Pass the lock, I hope you like this. Last year, you lost a day or two, didn't you?
Yes, unfortunately, so. Hopefully, we'll pray for rain, uh, for sun again. Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
You're very welcome.
And not over here. We're going back, we're going back and forth.
Six G, right?
Yes, sir. Resolution regarding transfer of Rhode Island Housing Funds to Balance Fiscal 2019. Councilman, yeah.
I think if you read the resolution, it's pretty self-explanatory. This is the first time, or the third time actually, that the General Assembly is asking Rhode Island Housing Authority some money. The first two times, they had to give them money. I think one of the times was mandatory. They should not be taking money from the housing authority to...
I think that answers...
...to the deficit in the budget. Especially the city of Central Falls. You know, our constituents have a hard time affording their rent.
I think we're all agreeing on that. That answered your question, that's helpful. Mr. Chairman, fairly simple, it's in front of you, Mr. Lozier.
Mr. Chairman, just have a question. I agree that anytime the governor takes away funds from departments, it's a strain on those departments and for what the intended purpose of those funds should be doing. I do have a question that ultimately, looking into this resolution, Mr. Chairman, it affects the city directly. And I have a question with solicitor on that, that the money that's been taken by the governor is also one million dollars that the city applied for for the acquisition of the Navigant Credit Union bill in the form of Dexter Credit Union. I'd ask the solicitor if those money are part of consideration because we are going, we do not have those funds that have not been expended to the city for this fiscal year to purchase the property.
As a brief update on that particular matter, I would say that the ten million dollar pot of money that was part of the Blight revitalization program that Rhode Island Housing put out for communities to bid into and applied for last summer was a bond issuance. And the bond has not actually been put out to market yet. My understanding is that it's going to be put out to market within the next month, and the city should expect to receive pursuant to signing agreements, and everyone else signing agreements, to receive the million dollars by June first. What did happen as a result of the proposed scoop of the Rhode Island Housing budget by the governor of the General Assembly is that we were going to be advanced the million dollars because Rhode Island Housing had excess funds that they could essentially lend at zero interest to the city. Because of the proposed scoop, that forward, that advance transfer of the money had to be canceled. And so the city is currently working with Navigant and Rhode Island Housing for alternative ways of finalizing and closing another transaction.
Mr. Chairman, I fully support that, and I would offer my recommendation that the city proceed with Navigant Credit Union to purchase the property immediately, with Navigant Credit Union providing a bridge loan until the money is acquired. A year and a half ago, right at the time when I first took office, Mr. Chairman, I submitted a request for a commission on acquiring the Dexter Credit Union building from Navigant, well, the Navigant building for use as city facilities. I presented that to the mayor. No action was taken at that time. I still strongly believe that that building is an important aspect for the city's future. We should be utilizing it.
Mr. Lozier, can we just act on the resolution before us, please?
I would recommend that the city proceed on acquiring the property immediately from Navigant, Mr. Chairman.
Do you want to act on a resolution regarding the Navigant, Rhode Island Housing Fund? The Balance Fiscal 2019.
I move to approve the resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion, Mr. Lozier. Seconded by Councilman Acosta. Any further discussion? Hearing unseen, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, nays, hearing unseen, none. So passed, thank you.
Item B is resolutions supporting page seven three five, and that's relating to foreclosure mediation conference.
And we have two people that have been very, very, very patient. From the Central Falls resident and city councilman, Mr. Ricardo Patino. Thanks, welcome back. And thank you for your patience. Amy, thank you for your patience. You were here like five thirty. See, I promise you, that you will get Stanley's hamburger, it's late. How about... Okay.
Thank you for your consideration this evening. My name is Amy Reyna, I work at Rhode Island Housing. And the resolution before you relates to bills that have been introduced in the General Assembly dealing with state's foreclosure mediation law. I'm sure that you all are aware of the impact that foreclosures have on homeowners as well as the municipalities. Back in 2013, the General Assembly passed legislation that basically will require any lender prior to initiating foreclosure to provide homeowners with the opportunity for mediation, basically an independent entity to mediate between the homeowner and the lender to make sure that every opportunity has been given for that homeowner to remain in their home. Unfortunately, that legislation has been very successful. It's helped over six hundred Rhode Islanders avoid foreclosure, and seventy percent of the homeowners who take advantage of the opportunity to participate in mediation are successful or exit that without resulting in foreclosure. Unfortunately, the legislation had a five-year sunset built into it. That sunset comes due on July first. So without further action, that law will disappear July first. The legislation H seven three eight five and S two two seven zero, all it does is eliminate that sunset and would maintain the current statute moving forward. And we would urge the council to support that. Happy to answer any questions.
That bill is, where does that bill stand right now? Is it in committee, out of committee, or thrown on the floor?
It actually had been originally scheduled for hearing, but it had to be postponed, where it's saying that it will be, at least scheduled very shortly.
And time is of the utmost, at this particular time. I guess it's self-explanatory. You got to give it a sunset clause. We approve, have motion by Councilman DeGaro, seconded by Councilman Solano. Any further discussion? I think it's self-explanatory. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, nays, hearing unseen, none. That was quick, we could have put...
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy, again, for your patience.
Item B is conservation of tax statements.
Looking for a motion to table that item?
Motion to table the presentation by Mr. Jalen Finkel, and to table the presentation by Trey Scott.
That's correct, yes. So we'll take them collectively. Second by Councilwoman Rivera, and Councilman Solano, all those in favor, signify. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, nays, ahs.
It's the last one. It's the last, last item.
Item B is consideration of tax statements.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve collectively.
Second.
Motion by Councilman, the second by Councilman Acosta to approve the amendments collectively. Any discussion? Seen that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, nays, hearing unseen, none. So moved.
Item B is consideration of claims. We have four in the packet, and it's from Ms. Courtney Jacobs of Fortune Marbury. I'll give you the packet.
Is she here?
She was not able to attend, she got stopped through the building. This was a rare occurrence.
Right, then, I know. Or either of them. So if I could speak on that briefly?
Oh, okay.
She probably was here, but he went home to sort of prepare for what's coming tonight, most likely. He had mentioned that it was a situation where our fire truck was on its way to a situation going down Cotty Street, taking a left onto Broad Street. He nicked a car, he caused about approximately five hundred dollars damages. And considering the situation, he would recommend that we just go ahead and pay what seems to be our issue.
What is your pleasure after that brief testimony? Has everybody read the report?
I'm sorry, do you want to consider a timeout?
Has everybody read the report?
My question would be, I mean, there was a five hundred cost of damage, but it's both par, agree with that five hundred dollars in the business assets?
Actually, I'm going to go ahead and defer to this.
The consideration of this would be, on one hand, you have a pedestrian in a motor vehicle who was admittedly by the fire department, the police department, struck by a rescue vehicle. The legal standard in this case is very similar to the legal standard when this council looks at police, the execution of search warrants by the police department. So just like when the police department breaks open a door in the legal official capacity of their office, we do not recommend payment of that claim. Similarly, in this case, as the fire department was executing an emergency action, and so that's defined in the law is, are your lights and sirens on? In this case, the lights and sirens were on. And the expectation with the public is that they get out of the way. They do not properly get out of the way, and their car is injured. The legal standard is they have to pay for it, not the municipality. So the municipality could, this council could vote to compensate this individual for her claim. But if the city council were to deny it and ask me to go to court to defend it, we would probably win.
Mr. Jim, here, I just want to, so here again, it almost goes back to the so-called good Samaritan. In line of duty, something happened. Yeah. It's something we'll use that term, good Samaritan, in the future for something in our ordinances. Because it's not even... Mr. Lozier?
Mr. Chairman, since this individual did put it on the agenda, I think we should give the individual an opportunity to come before the council. I make a motion to refer this to claims committee and bring it back up to the next meeting. So give her an opportunity to discuss it. If she wants to make a presentation to address the council, she's not here to take action on it or to deny it now. Without her being allowed to comment on it, I think we should just table it and refer it to the claims committee to review it and allow them to come back.
The report is there, and her narrative is there also. So we have her words on paper, if you read it. And we also have the police report, if you read it.
Yes, but if we take action to deny, Mr. Chairman, we're not giving her an opportunity to appear.
You can appeal it. What?
As Matt said, if we go to court, Matt feels we would win. We have a motion.
Is there a second?
Who made a motion?
Mr. Lozier made a motion to defer to the claims committee and here at the next meeting.
Did not get a second.
With any...
Is there a second? Motion dies? Any... That motion?
Can I ask recommendation?
Oh, absolutely.
I'll send this to the center.
Absolutely, sure.
If the matter were denied and you sent me to court to defend it, I think the law department would be successful in denying the claim. But that doesn't mean, you know, if you retain a discretion as to whether to pay it, law department's recommendation is not to pay it.
Question?
Sure.
Also from the law department, as you make a decision on the claim, does it have to be for the full amount? So for example, if we sat down and said like, hey, you understand we paid, we made the damage, we're not going to pay for the rental car. Is that in our discretion, or is that something that would be managed in the court?
The council has full discretion as to the amount that you wish to pay for the claim based on the evidence that's been before you. You're a decision-making body based on the findings of past. However, if you did not pay the full amount requested, so let's say you paid sixty percent of it, you could then appeal it to the small claims court, and our payment of the initial amount could be deemed an admission of guilt, which the court would then use in making us pay the full amount.
So in the report, it doesn't say where she stopped exactly. Do we have pictures of where she stopped? That picture is a picture of after, right? But do we have, do we know exactly where the vehicle was, vehicle number one? Like, was she moved out of the way or was she in the way? Like, was she moved out of the way or was she in the way?
I can read a brief description of what I received from the fire department. Would that be helpful?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Sure. This is from Chief Bradley himself. After talking to the driver Jared Penet, who's our EMS supervisor in the city, who was the driver of ladder number one, which was involved in a minor accident at the intersection of Broad and Cowden Streets, this is what he stated. He was responding to a call at Ashram, Sylvania, with lights and sirens on. He proceeded to make a left-hand turn onto Broad Street from Cowden when the vehicle in question stopped on Broad Street. As the ladder was taking a turn, the operator of the other vehicle is stating that the ladder hit her car. The only damage to the ladder was a cracked lens on the left front stabilization outrigger, which had been replaced. Private Penet states that he was not aware of any accident until he was notified of the police department about the incident.
One more question. This is I mean, this, the amount claimed is relative to those, so presumably this would be within their deductible. In terms of your familiarity, though, with insurance companies, would insurance, would an insurance cover this, or is this driver liable because they didn't get out of the way on the emergency?
The city clerk could correct me if I'm incorrect, but when she's submitted this claim, we submit all claims to our insurer, the trust. And depending on the level and depending on what the council officially refers it to, the trust, they're then further notified. But their initial reaction was to our city clerk that they don't pay these claims.
No, 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 I meant like a private insurance. Nice, so if she has liberty.
Oh, would her insurance?
Yeah, like would an insurance, would an insurance company cover someone not moving out of the way for an emergency?
It'd be her deductible.
Right, well, yeah.
No, she'd be at fault. They would too.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, so I mean, the only variables we have here is we don't know how far she moved out of the way when she turned the side lanes and saw the flashing lights. We don't want to go to court on that. Again, we don't know those facts, but but I really like the good Samaritan thing. I mean, we have to support our police and firemen and their line of duty. It doesn't sound like it was reckless driving. Have a motion, Council?
I move to deny the claim.
Motion by Councilwoman Francie to adjourn. Is there a second? Hearing none. Motion dies. Is there another motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve the payment of the claim by Councilwoman Rivera. Is there a second?
I move to table the claim until the next
He's going to declare it, no second. It died.
No, mine died.
She made a motion with no one else seconded it. The chair has to declare that there's no second motion.
I did.
You did?
I did. Mr. Lozier, open your ears, please.
I didn't hear your second.
Don't blame me if you don't hear, please.
I was listening to
So, motion to table the claim for our next meeting, in which case the person should be going to find the law.
Second?
We have a motion to table till the next meeting after notification of the parties involved, which I guess would also include fighting. We have a second by Mr. Lozier. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Names? One name.
I don't hear the voice was from Councilwoman Rivera and Councilwoman Zaya, yes. Two.
Table. Yes.
I have it.
Yeah.
We have one name. I have it. So, next time?
Not you.
And those?
Yes, sir. We have several condolences, resolutions. I will not read the names that Mr. Acosta had read earlier today. But then there was from Councilwoman Zaya, the Central Falls Lions Club for an annual community fundraising breakfast on March 18th. And operation stand down over Rhode Island on its 25th year of serving Rhode Island's veterans. Councilwoman Rivera had several for thanking the following people for their support with the league efforts close hurricane area. Chief, chief, chef, chef, Kevin Roth, Chef Giovanna Yuki, Yuk, Obakiko, and Suhalabre, and Newport Vineyards. And then Councilwoman Solano had several from the Dominican American, a war celebration in Rhode Island. Mr. Jose Luis Suazo, Antonio Valdez, Jose Polanco, Joani Santa, Anadigis Rodriguez, Francisco Ramirez, Regorio Van de Horst, and U.S. Senator Sean Myers.
Can we make a motion to approve collectively?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve?
Collectively.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Solano to approve collectively, seconded by Councilwoman Francie.
Mr. Jim?
All those, what, Mr. Lozier, you can't add or scrap?
No, I'm just asking the city clerk if she had other requests from me that she didn't act on.
Those are all the condolences I have for you, sir. I am going to read the condolences next.
Okay. I have some others today, but they could be done at the next meeting.
The three you sent me today were condolences. I will read them next as soon as this
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Names? Hearing none, seeing none, ayes none.
And then the course of actions of condolences submitted by Councilwoman Acosta from Mrs. George L. Scott, who passed away last week. Mrs. Scott is the father of Trey Scott of our planning firm. Yes, he is away. He's been away this week. Councilwoman Rivera, Cecilia Ray McPherson, who passed away in January. And Councilwoman Zaya, here yours. Horeb Tenios Jesberg.
Tenios Jesberg. It's my mother's cousin.
Mr. Donald Greven, he's the father of Mayor Greven. And Ms. Charlene Valkport. And those are the
Valkport.
Looking for a motion of
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman?
Collectively. Seconded by Councilwoman Francie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Names? I have it.
And then we are on to a minute, meeting minutes. We have two February 4th and February 46th.
Mr. Chairman? I know you wanted to get out before 8:30, Mr. Chairman. I move that we defer these because I have much discussion on the minutes. So if you want to continue it, you want to discuss it, it's, I'll leave it up to you, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to defer the minutes. We have a second by Councilwoman Rivera. Defer the minutes to what, April? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye. Names? Hearing none, seeing none. So deferred till April.
And when will it start then?
Well, I want to stop. I thank Maria on her efforts for the International Women's Day little event Saturday, bringing the mayor in from Kansas. She was terrific. And what you did is terrific, and if Stephanie was still here, I'd say the same thing. Also, I understand from here that the Lions Club has a breakfast bingo. I believe it's on the 18th of March, which is Sunday. And it's also Red Cross month, I understand.
Yeah, that's, I put that request for a resolution for
I knew it was Red Cross.
Okay.
I gave $7 to the Red Cross. Anyone else?
The 24th is the Holiday Express Dinner. I have tickets.
I'm sorry.
The 24th, the Holiday Express Dinner that they do as a one day from Florida State at the Garfield Social Club. And the business owners meeting this Wednesday, that might get canceled, but because of right now.
It's canceled last week, and so this week it should be canceled.
I have some very good news for the city council. We just received notice from the Rhode Island Foundation that we are going to receive $40,000 in grant funds to a census initiative this summer to hire canvassers to go door to door and discuss updating of our local addresses, which are the foundation of the census for the first municipality around to win an award to do that, and it's critically important because every person that's counted is the foundation by which all of our funding is received for education, healthcare, things of the sort. It's great.
Anyone else?
Related to that, both as, you know, my interest councilman, but also my interest as a sociologist, please start spreading the word. This test, the census test administration is coming, and the real census, which will take place in 2020, will take place on the internet. I'm not a fan of that. And so you're going to have to fill out the census on the internet, which
Go around one door?
No, no, no. So, what they, how they did in 2010 was you mailed in your census form, and then the people that come door to door are only for those who don't respond. So you actually don't need someone to come to your door if you filled it out, but the change from 2010 to this administration is going to be that they want people using the internet. Now, I feel like that disproportionately puts us at a disadvantage, given our elderly population and our population of people who don't have access to the internet. So I think it's important that we start telling people now that it's going to happen online, and if they need help, you know, you'd be willing to support your friends and family and make sure you fill out the census. So that we do get counted correctly.
And we can open up the schools for that all this summer, too.
Yeah, so I think that's a conversation that definitely one of the
Mr. Chairman, just for information to the public that Benfitt and Tucker Street construction started today. So there'll be disruption on both those streets replacing gas lines, so they were supposed to do it last year. They deferred it, and I saw construction starting. So, people in the area of Benfitt and Tucker, please expect a disturbance. I'm not sure if everything is going to be done tomorrow, but road construction has started.
Let's hope they don't leave litter when they leave. The only other thing I want to congratulate for you, basketball fans, both Providence College and University, and I was making the NCAA tournament. I do wish them both best of luck. Although I'm a PC fan, but I will also root for Rhode Island in the tournament. Unless they beat the finals, then of course I root for Providence College. Looking for a jury.
President, I would also like to congratulate Maria and former concert woman for this great event, the Woman Award. That's Friday, it was, Saturday, it was great, and the media
Thank you.
She was great. It was a great event, and congratulations Maria and Stephanie.
And you also, tremendous job. Franken read a poem, no paperwork, nothing. He just went out and did it. In fact, he's writing a poem for the city council. Going to mention every member of the council. I'm serious, he did it. He just winged it. He just told them to do a poem, he did a poem. I believe it's great. Looking for a jury.
Most two jurors.
Can we just congratulate Jonathan one more time for working with our youth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Congratulations, Jonathan.
And next time, let us know. We'll move the council into the auditorium. How many kids? About 40 kids.
It was great.
Looking for a jury.
Most two jurors.
If you understand this here, that 8:40 straight.